Session is with the Director of Elizabeth Parks and Rec, Mike Barney, and Kurt Brizlo. And Mike, do you want to go ahead and start it out for us?
Sure. Love to.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Buck, Commissioner Schroeder, and Commissioner McDaniel for allowing us to be here today, talk with you guys, and share our PROST master plan we've been working on. As I shared with you probably about a couple of months ago, I guess now, we were working on it and we're getting close to having the final report done. We are working towards some deadlines, and so I appreciate you allowing us to get on your schedule and present, provide a little presentation today, and then hopefully a little bit of discussion about a couple of requests we'd like to make, and just a general pledge of support, and certainly, most importantly, just to kind of get you up to speed on what we're doing. Again, this was a plant master plan done in conjunction with the Town of Elizabeth, as well as the Elizabeth School District, and really looking at all of our assets and properties, and trying to come up with a master plan for the future. For us, and for many residents, Parks and Recreation is not just a nice-to-have, it is an essential service, and so we hope that you guys agree with that, and from a leadership level, and recognize the power that Parks and Recreation plays in a community, and for the, and the contributions it makes to the quality of life for our residents. And so, again, this plan is something that, it's a vision that we have for the Park and Recreation System over the next 15, 20 years, and it helps us identify projects to pursue, and opportunities that we can pursue. Most importantly, it's based off of survey data that we, and open house events that we held with residents to really hear what they want, and what they don't want, and what they'd like to see as far as their Parks and Recreation System. So I thought we'd start it off today with one of our consultants, Critter Thompson, right? Critter Thompson, with SCJA Alliance, is going to give a little overview of the master plan process and the final report, and then we can take some time afterwards to have some discussion, and address any questions that you guys may have. Thanks again.
Thanks. Good to meet you all. Glad to be here. Yeah. It should be green now. Can you guys hear me? Yeah, okay. Do you need to get the?
Yes.
You guys, could get it up there, on there, so everyone could see it. If I need to do it on my end, I need to share screen, right? Yep, that makes a lot of sense. Okay. All right. Go to presenter mode. Hold on. Give me a second here. Bear with me as I figure out how to do this. Alright, Teams. Where'd it go? Share. Oh, hold on. Screen recording. Ah, boy. All right. Hold on. You got me? Okay. Maybe what I need to do is make it so it's not full screen. Oh, there. Click that button.
Permission to share.
Yep, hold on. Uh, I can log back in, I guess. Sorry, guys. Audio drive, Teams. All right. Try this again. So... Share. Allow. That. All right. Got it. Technology. All right, so thanks. So as Mike noted, this is a project we've been working on for, I'll get into it a little bit, for a few months now, probably about eight months, something like that. We started last fall, so I can get a little closer to this. And it's the consultants, so it's, I'm actually with Catamount Studio, but SCJA Alliance is the lead consultant in this project. So we've been working close together for a bunch of different projects, but specifically this one for the past, since probably last fall, maybe October, we started, something like that. So this, we'll kind of run through this, and Mike, Kurt, jump in whenever, and you all, we can have this be kind of a conversation if you like. We'll skip through some of this, make as much of it focused on the county as we can, we'll give you an overview of what we worked on. But we'll just talk a little bit about what this project is, what a PROST is, what this Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan, kind of the process we went through, and how we ended up with a plan that is, Mike summarized real briefly, and then maybe touch, as he noted on, some ways that the county can kind of be involved, and hopefully have some conversations going forward. As Mike noted, the partners, EPR, the Town of Elizabeth, and the Elizabeth School District, so all work closely together. They reached out and secured a grant with GOCO to make this project happen. SCJA Alliance sort of let it, and one of the key pieces of the GOCO grant was a really strong community engagement process, so that was a very important part of this. As you'll see, we'll kind of touch into some of what we found through that process, but that was a really key part of this. Obviously, Parks Recreation, Open Space and Trails, the Albert County in particular, but the region that we're touched on for this project, really focused on, was the EPR District, which is effectively mostly in District One, I believe, right? But it's about the same area as the Elizabeth School District, so that's where we were focused for this project. But one of the real key reasons and drive for this was increase in population. I mean, Albert County is obviously very ag-focused and rural, but this particular part of Albert County is seeing a lot higher growth than much of the rest of the county, so part of the real need for this is to try and be proactive instead of reactive, and seeing this growth happen, try to think about how do we plan for the future? So, so our real timeframe, as noted, is we're kind of at the end of this now. We started in the fall, finishing up now. The hope, the final draft is with the town and EPR, and kind of the final reviews. Kurt just handed me one piece of paper with some changes as I walked in. So that's where we're at now, but hope to get it adopted by the town in the next couple of weeks if we can, so. But really began with some, a bunch of GIS mapping analysis of a variety of different sources, we'll get into. This map is obviously showing publicly owned land highlighted, and Albert County is the purple, so you could see Elizabeth and the Pines Park. Let's see if I, over here, to the east, and then, this is Cimarron, EPR-owned, ball fields up here, Casey Jones Evans over here, just on the east side of town, and then these two pieces of county-owned property on either side of Cimarron, kind of interesting. But then also to the north, so this is looking up towards the north end of Albert County here. So this big piece of property here is state-owned land, which is kind of interesting, and just touching on some of the publicly owned land that we looked at through the, through the analysis in the early stages. But this is a school district property here, and then this about 150-acre property, also county-owned, that EPR has been talking with you all about. So another school district property over here. A lot of the development that has been happening is kind of in this quadrant over here, in the northwest part of the county. What you're seeing on the map here, this is EC West or Crescent Development, so you guys are familiar with that, of course, and then EC East, and a bunch of similar kind of stuff is happening in this part of the county. Don't need to dwell on this, this is just part of the analysis we looked at of existing parks in the Town of Elizabeth, and where they're located. So EPR-owned properties, Cimarron, Evans, Casey Jones, you're all familiar with those, of course. School District owns a few parcels as well, so trying to, as part of this, is taking a close look at each of these, and doing an inventory of what's in each of these parks, and what's, you know, how the condition of each of those as well. And then, of course, Albert County's parcels, which you highlighted, and you're familiar with, I think. So, again, any questions of any of these, feel free to speak up, but... And as part of then, that too, once looking at those in detail, what's, as I noted, what's, what's there, what's not there, the condition of those. The total number of parks within the general region, how does that compare to national averages, particularly when you start to think about growth, and the growth in the region, and stuff like that? Most of the parks are, you know, centered around the town. You start to look in outside the town, and where a lot of the growth is happening in the school district area, now you start to see some deficits in the numbers compared to national averages, particularly when you start to look at the projection into the future, in the 10-year growth projection. So, things to think about when trying to plan for the future, right? Particularly as this growth may continue to happen. So, and that, you look at the kind of things that you find in parks, whether they're playgrounds, ballfields, dog parks, those sorts of things. There's still a lot of red in those growth projections too, and things that, you know, may be missing, maybe people might be wanting. And we'll get into more, a little bit more detail when we start looking at the engagement, and what we heard, where people are going for certain facilities and things like that, in the region, out of the region. So, just continuing in that, you see a lot of red, in yellow and red and those, so. So this is just part of our process as we move through, not to dwell on it. We can come back to any of this if you guys have questions. But as then, during this process, we also began our outreach and engagement, which kind of continued from the early stages in October. And this is just a list of, so this is outreach to date, it says on the slide, but clearly we're finished with the outreach. But a lot of stakeholder interviews, of course, community events, and then a lot of work with students in the high school. So we spent, oh gosh, probably, well, most of our time working with students, and they were very involved, and we worked with a number of different classes, with Stuko helped a ton, they helped with our workshops, they helped engage students in a variety of different ways. So that was, that was really interesting. And you can kind of see here, this is a summary of all of the outreach. At the end, we probably, I think it was pushing 700 people that we reached in the end, which for, that's a really good number of folks that we were able to engage with. But, but you can see here, this 61 on the 12- to 17-year-olds, that was, thanks a lot to Stuko and the student government that helped us really reach high school students, so, and some of the younger students at the elementary school, so that's great. But one of the things that's really interesting about this part of Albert County too is the number of HOAs, and so I think that one of the things we heard, and you'll see in some of these slides too, is that, you know, HOAs, and they're very different sorts of HOAs, some of the HOAs are equestrian-focused, some HOAs have trails and parks of their own to some extent, but about half of the people we reached live in HOAs, so a lot of, this is kind of an interesting part of the analysis too, is that there are quite a few people that don't have students or kids in their household, so. But a lot of folks have lived, about half have lived, in the greater Elizabeth area for more than 10 years, so, but still, quite a few people are new and moving to the area. So, again, perhaps not surprising, but... And then I think these are really important to our understanding of the community as well. Perhaps not surprising in the larger scheme of things, but when we look at the amenities that, it's just kind of maps to the analysis of looking of what exists in the greater Elizabeth area in terms of amenities at the parks, the existing parks. A lot of people are leaving Elizabeth, the greater Elizabeth area, and northwest Albert County. And of the existing parks that are there, if you look at everything other than Casey Jones and Evans, most people really are never going there. So, kind of begs the question as to why? What are they going for? Why are they not going to these parks? And what are some of the barriers? And one of the key ones here is that amenities of interest are not available at the parks that are there, so. This is really looking at where residents are going to use their amenities, and the orange you see, of which are the highest for most of these, are outside Elizabeth. So for open space natural areas, most people are leaving this area. Short walking trails, similarly, quite a few. So a lot of people are leaving the community to go make use of all these things. Rec centers, you'll see that come up a bunch here, but pretty much everybody for obvious reasons, right? So, and then thinking about, this just is similar data, but looking at only what they're using in Elizabeth. And so this is about using parks that are existing, or using your local HOA in the community. So are you staying in your neighborhood, or are you going to a park in and around Elizabeth? So. And then this is the... About trying to get at what people would really want in the community. So the last slide, we were looking at how people use the spaces now, and now we're trying to look at what people would like, right? In the, in the, in the community. And you could see here that, perhaps not surprising, it's a, it's a, it's an area that is rural, that really appreciates and like the rural nature of this area, right? Passive open spaces are part of what makes Albert County and Elizabeth area what it is, so that's, score's really high. Active play spaces, there are more and more children moving into this area, particularly this northwest part of the county. Community gathering spaces, that's similar. A lot of the students, that's something that they've really communicated is missing a lot. And then in terms of amenities, what stood out more and more, and over and over, was rec center, pools and aquatic facilities, so that, again, you could see trails, paths, things like that, so. And back to the rec center, and I know rec centers come up in the past, but the support for rec center is really, really high, and we heard that over and over again. One of the questions we asked is a willingness to pay for a rec center, because having rec centers come up before, obviously. And one of the interesting questions on that was how much people would be willing to pay, and you could see here on this graph on the lower left, that quite a few people even would be willing to pay a decent amount of money, so, for a rec center. Not surprisingly, also we asked then, what are the concerns with a rec center? Concerns cost, growth, potentially limits to growth, and that sort of thing, so, you know.
Can you make that slide a little bit bigger for a second?
Sure. I could try to. Which side?
That's fine. You were...
That work?
No, it's a little too big now.
Okay.
So I'd like to be able to read the, yeah.
That work?
Right about there.
Huh? You looking over here?
I was looking, actually, looking on the left side.
Oh, this side, the numbers on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the bottom one there, 280 to 320 annually, so that's like $24, $27 a month. And that was about 84 respondents. It's like a pretty good number.
Would there be a way for us to get this presentation at the end?
Yeah.
So we can dig into it a little bit more, but...
Absolutely. Yeah, of course.
And I'll make sure you guys get a copy of the full annual report, or the master plan report as well, so as we get it published. Back to Critter's slide there on the amount, the amount they're willing to pay. You know, a lot of the district exists on assessments from your real estate, so that's a very interesting number to gauge as we look at increasing the assessment on a property, are they, they're willing to pay another $24 a month for their, to support a rec center? And that's, I can't remember how that compared to our last initiative to get the rec center passed, but I think it's comparable. So that's a good sign, from our standpoint, that there's an interest and support financially for the rec center.
Well, that makes me wonder if it's voluntarily paying, if you're going to use the facility, or use the amenity, versus being taxed on it, and you may or may not use it. So if you think you're not going to use it, and you're going to be taxed on it, you don't want to pay, and you're going to say, no, I don't want to pay $0 to $20, I'll pay $0 to $20. But if you are voluntarily going to use it, and you think you may access that amenity quite frequently, yeah, okay, well, I'll pay 300 a year annually. So I think there's a difference in people's minds if you don't make that separation there, whether it's a voluntary payment based on usage, or mandatory, you're paying for it whether you use it or not.
And I've talked to Mike about this before. I was the clerk and recorder the last time the Park and Rec ran the bill, and there, mill levy override, and I had a lot of people come in, and there were two key provisions in that question that I think shot it down. And one was that it said it may include a swimming pool. People really got hung up on that word "may," because they felt it was, the rug is going to get pulled out from under, and if they, they pulled for it, was the "may." And then the fact that there wasn't a sunset on the mill levy, that once the rec center, or whatever facility would be built, that there, the taxes would not go away. And I had several people comment on that to me as well during that. So food for thought, that was the feedback I received when I was clerk and recorder, and that was on the ballot.
Yeah, those, both really good points, and we heard in the engagement stuff, both those points made. The swimming pool was a very popular thing, and that was a need that was expressed over and over again, so. But that mill levy point was not expiring, or ending, was also raised a bunch of times. So, that's interesting. Thanks. And then just to kind of summarize the takeaways from the, and as Mike noted in the, I said the final report, the actual plan, master plan, there's a lot more detail than this, so to get that, you can dig in as much as you want, in much more detail. But really, the, kind of the key takeaways were preservation of open space, very, very important to the larger community. Need for, obviously, additional services and amenities, but don't want the Castle Rock Parker, right? This is not that, and people felt very strongly about that. Preserving the rural character, this is just echoing that same thing, but it's difficult when town, county, and, you know, public land, generally speaking, there's not a lot of it. So how to do that, and strategies for doing that are tricky. So that's potentially part of this conversation, but... And then just the growing concentration of residents in the northern end of the district, they're far from the existing amenities, so, you know, how to think about that. So a lot of that is addressed in the plan, as you'll, as you'll see some of, and would be part of this conversation. And then obviously, the top needs identified, not surprising, we just touched on the first two. The third, you know, I don't need to dig into these in detail, you'll see some of them in some of the, the park plans that are, we're going to highlight, and given time, I don't want to go into a whole lot of detail unless you say, hey, I want to focus on this, you know, stop me at any time, because I'll kind of run through some of them pretty quickly. But just to give you a sense of the kind of stuff that really rose to the top for a lot of people. Another piece to this, of course, was, an important piece to this is really setting up the strategies for the, for the plan, and for outlining the next steps, and vision, goals, and objectives, of course, are part of any kind of master plan. The vision here, the Elizabeth community envisions a future where rural countries, the rural countryside thrives, who preserved open landscapes, connected parks, trails, and open spaces that foster community, promote well-being, and sustain our community's unique character for generations. Again, obviously, that's really picking up on the rural character, the community's unique character, and trying to really hold on to that, and so that the gentrification that's happening isn't, doesn't spread too much into Albert County. So, and then the goals, and I'm not going to go into these, you can read them, but try to really focus on that. So it's a, first one's about the conference of trail system, second one's on preserving The third one is development of a rec center. Fourth one is about upgrading existing parks and open spaces and trails. And then we have one about securing funding, so really working, and there's a bunch of things in the plan to help identify paths for funding, and then, and conceptual park designs, which you'll see some of. And then the last one is really about management. So how do you, if you have those things, then how do you keep them going into the future? So then, these, I'm not going to, again, highlight, we'll go through really fast, these are individual goals and the objectives behind them. What I do want to just, and the reason I kept these in here, is you can see some of these have some objectives that relate to the county, potentially, right? So, and we did have some early discussions, for example, with the County Road and Bridge Department about trails, and you'll see in a little bit, a lot of the trails and the path for the future, for the trails, involve roads, because there's not a lot of public land to have trails on. So like this first one here is about coordinating the Albert County Road and Bridge to facilitate trail design guidelines. So some of the objectives in here involve conversations with the county, and so that's maybe part of this conversation, depending on how that goes. So, again, another one here for preserving landscapes is thinking about working on, for example, things like future development projects, prioritizing open space, and how the county could be part of thinking about what that looks like when new development projects come to the table, come to the county, thinking about what kind of policies, regulations, things like that, may or may not want to be into the mix to help thinking about preserving open space, or adding parks, or whatever, certain amenities, things like that. So this, these, you can look at later in the presentation, or in the plan, when they come, I won't go into those sorts of details. And then we, the plan gets into implementation strategy, where we talk about budget and lay out some conceptual designs for parks, and some costing and things like that, so. What you're looking at on this slide here is district-wide trail plan. It's hard to see on this clearly, because it looks really tiny. To give you just a general sense, obviously, here's town, this is the whole area, so the blue line is the school district boundary, it's basically District One, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, that roughly, Kai was here. But then, most of the trails would connect through some existing trails in Elizabeth, of which there still aren't that many, but most of the trails would be along road right-ofways, and some, we have strategies for that, which we can touch on if it makes sense or not, and then some phasing around that. So the first phasing ideas would be around, so up here in this orange part where my cursor is, this is Crescent, or EC West is over here. So as that development, for example, starts to go in, and they have already some plans for upgrading the road network and things like that, thinking about connecting... for upgrading the road network and things like that, thinking about connecting some trails on those right, road right-ofways there. And then phase two is blue and green is three. So similarly with the town, there's some strategies and plans for that. And then this map just highlights all of the projects that are touched on in the plan and have dollars attached to them, rough dollars and things like that. So, and then just to give you a sense, and I can go through these pretty quickly, but these are conceptual plans that we worked on in more detail with the project team. And this one in particular is kind of unique because we worked on it with the high school students. So this is just, I'll give this one a little bit more because it's, it was kind of a fun one. Up here to the north is the high school, Elizabeth High School, and then this is eighty-six down here. And so this piece, this kind of linear parcel is owned by the town. And so we worked for quite a while with the high school students and this is just an image of them with trace paper on a map. We went to the site in the middle of winter, it was freezing cold with them and walked around a bunch and got a bunch of ideas with them, went back again in the spring when it was nicer after doing some more talk about, or planning and design and all that sort of stuff. And then they sketched out a bunch of ideas and we incorporated a lot of those ideas in this conceptual design for this plan. But just gives you a sense of what we did for a lot of the existing parks and some new parks. This obviously is a town park, so, but Running Creek, this is the one right off eighty-six to the south by town. I can go through quickly.
The previous slide, I'm going to show my ignorance here, I don't know what a gaga pit is.
Oh, that, yeah.
You're not alone.
Yeah, right. It's, it's a, it's a kind of a ball game that kids like. It's like in a octagon shaped with a, it's probably about as high as this table, walls inside. And kids go in and they, it's like a bouncy ball and they, it's a game that kids love playing.
They go gaga with it, is that the idea? Okay, thank you.
Anyway, yeah.
I'm not sure how much time you folks have for this discussion, but should we focus on the county?
Yeah, I'm going to zoom through to go to the county ones, yeah. And this is one of them right here. So, so this is the parcel that's, that, this by Spring Valley Ranch, which is to the north here. And so this is the Rattlesnake Fire District here. So, and I don't know if Mike or Kurt want to talk about this. Say they're lots or not, but we went back and forth a lot on kind of this parcel. One of the key things about this particular project is about a hundred and fifty acres. It does not have, does not have water. So the design of this right now is taking that into account. But this basically is the rough list of programming we have for now on the site.
Critter, I'll offer some background.
Yeah.
The district had some conversations with the commissioners, I think you may have been present, about this property and how the park district could take it over. And, and when, when Mike and I sat down with the commissioners, they were asking, you know, what are you going to do here, how soon can you have it done, et cetera, et cetera. And, and at that point, we had not, we didn't have a master plan in hand. And so that was, this was identified as one of the products to come out of the master plan is, what can we do on this hundred and fifty acres that the county currently owns? There are other parcels that Critter dove into as well and we can talk about that. But, but taking the elements of the master plan and the needs of the current and the future residents, how can we apply those to this hundred and fifty acres and work together with you in, in developing that? And so, once again, Critter can go through the elements, it had, the property has challenges, but it lies within the area of, of the district that's seeing the greatest amount of growth.
Right, and, and I'll just, thank you Kurt, that's good context. And that last point is an important one too, which is, this is the area where the county's seen a lot of growth. And as was noted earlier, most of the amenities tend to be around town of Elizabeth. So providing some of this programming further up north made a lot of sense, so.
No, I, I appreciate that, that was one of our, our asks was to have a little bit more detail on, on where your plan was. And so I, I really appreciate the, the work and effort that's gone in here. I think part of the conversation we had before is also that we might be able to go to the developer at Spring Valley and get some water returned, at least enough to have bathrooms and, and that sort of thing. I think that's probably still a viable thing, I'm happy to be a part of that if, if I think it would be helpful. But I, I do appreciate the effort and, and listening to what, what we say we need to have a little bit better of a plan before we go forward and so I, I do appreciate that.
And, and this plan starts to bring in elements that some of the recently approved developments, residential developments, aren't offering to their residents or to the existing residents of Albert County. In other words, a lot of play fields in here as well as equestrian, bike, archery elements, which we're not seeing in some of the approved developments in and around this property.
Have you spoken to the developers in the area and got their input on participation? It's going to be serving their communities for the majority of their community. So I would ask if you guys had spoke with them yet.
So Mark, yes, the district is having discussions with EC West because we need to enter into a district overlay agreement. In other words, EC West, as part of their metro district, said that they were going to offer parks and recreation services. In order to get that, that's fine, but they need to get the approval of the Elizabeth Park and Recreation District. They did not. That metro district plan was approved by the county and the state without that in hand. So we're in discussions with the EC West developer about what can they do to come and, what are the elements of that agreement? Is it, is it a development fee? Improvements in lieu of, is it a contribution to this development, these facilities? That conversation is still going on.
Well, I, I put in there, we don't have any final plats in, in EC West yet either. So now's the time to be talking, if you're going to talk about integrating trails and, and all that, before that comes before us as a final plat.
Yeah, and I think we had some interesting conversations with the EC West team right up as we were getting close to finishing up the plan and their, and the state-owned property that kind of they're surrounding on at least two of their sides.
Yeah, so the, part of Critter's charge in the district was to look at properties we identified. This was one of them, the Two Simron Parcels, the Elizabeth and the Pines Parcels. These are all county-owned property that are just out there and they have not been developed further. And one of the additional items to look into was what facilities can we put in EC West to address the direction from this master plan? And, and as Critter will show you, there were discussions, we said, okay, with EC West, we want to see where you can accommodate playgrounds, trails, and he'll show you the plan. And then they looked at how they can incorporate those within their ownership. And then they have looked at the section owned by the state land board to solve this. Now that's personal opinion, that's stretch, you know, I'm looking at your backyard size law problem? I don't think so. But we have had those discussions and ongoing discussions.
So I, we'll note too, that for, just to, potentially for further conversations, there, this arrow that points up to the north here, but to Spring Valley, there is a road easement that runs north-south here, so.
And we have had some discussions with Jim Marshall.
I think having water there would be a, kind of a game changer, yes, it feels like an important. The way it's, we've set it up and designed it now is without water because, but I think that would be super helpful. I'll skip over, this is the parcel just to the north of the, the, where Kurt was just talking about, the, where the state land board property is. It's a, a school-owned property. And then it's a, I'm going to skip over these town ones for now. Okay, and here's the Simron, so this is the parcel owned by EPR, but this kind of call-out map here.
Can you zoom in on that overall?
Yes, I'm trying, this one, yeah.
Because I think it provides a great context.
Yeah, so, and this is, the map is, is turned, so. So north is, north is to the left, that's right. So this is this, the Simron parcel and then these two parcels are owned by the county. And so one of the things, and it would actually be, I, I wish I had even more of a zoom out and Kurt kind of was talking about this, because this, if you're heading east, so this arrow is pointing east, this would connect, and we did talk to, there's a developer that owns the parcel right here, just to the east of it, who is willing to, so far, and is talking with the town about putting a trail connection through there into property owned by the town that connects to the middle school. So, so that, that connection could be made all the way through to Simron. And then there is a, kind of a missing link, as Kurt's called it, which is true, right down to eighty-six. But this connection, kind of along, there's a creek bed through here, it's dry a lot, but, but having a trail, that's, this, as you can see here, this is a, we have kind of a trail network running through there is the, is kind of the idea, but.
There's a, a missing link between the property you own at Simron.
Just down here.
And stage-run open space.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, we could have a trail network going from stage-run through Simron, through the town property, by the middle school, high school and into town.
Whoops.
And, you know, with other acquisitions perhaps, all the way to Casey Jones Park.
Who owns that piece? The missing link, who owns it?
Oh, boy, I could tell you.
It's a private land of, I don't know the name. But I mean, when you look at it on the county's map and public information map, it's like.
It's very small.
We're there, we're almost there.
So that's one of those opportunity things, like if that were ever to come up for sale or something like that. If, you know, if the county or the town or somebody were aware and paying attention and willing to, you know, step in and. But, anyway, so that's, that's, I would be careful of time. So this is the EC West parcel and it's, this is not a great map because we didn't, they didn't want us to actually show their plans, as you said, they don't have the plat, so, but the idea was, but what, the important reason we showed this one, it's kind of hard to see now, but the topography is pretty crazy up there, as maybe many of you know, but like, some of the programming that initially we wanted to have on there just wouldn't work. And this is where, as Kurt was saying, their solution was, oh, well, we'll put it in the state-owned land parcel. Well, okay, I don't know how that works unless, yeah, you figure it out with the state and somehow that works. Anyway, the recommended programming for the EC West that we've been communicating, talking with them about, are, you can see here, so. And they seemed meddable to that and those conversations were very positive and it's listed as such in the plan. And their ongoing conversations with the state land board about that parcel and how those progress is still up in the air, but, so. And so those, those are just the, and the Elizabeth and the Pines Park is not shown in there. It is in the plan and the ideas for that are to keep it simple, to keep it kind of as a, more of an open space with a kind of a trail, like a dirt trail, like a nice trail for people that, that goes around it, but kind of keep it.
It doesn't change the character of the property.
Doesn't change the character, that's right.
And we've had, the district has had numerous discussions when this has come up with the homeowners within Elizabeth.
This slide, yeah.
And you guys, and commissioners have had discussions with those residents as well, right?
It's kind of a unique parcel in there.
And I was, I was approached by Jim Carlson about three months ago, again, about that, about that property, him just asking if we were interested in it still. He said that, because where it was left last with the commissioners was that you guys had given them the opportunity to kind of form their HO, their own HOA and maintain that property and take care of that property, fire risk mitigation, that type of stuff. And Jim said that their efforts just, that just never materialized, that just no one, no one took any action on that. And so that's why he came back to approach me and see if we were still interested in managing that property.
And I just want to touch on this real quickly and it's, it's less relevant now, but it's more of the conversation of the rec center and the pool and where that goes and having a conversation with the community about, because obviously the Casey Jones master plan and everything that went into that and looking at, well, could there be other places? And EC West came up as an idea, clearly that doesn't work. The location up by, or it doesn't work either. So really, the place that still makes the most sense is Casey Jones. So that's identified in the plan as well, after looking at all sorts of other alternatives, but just wanted to point that out too. So that, that's really the, kind of the real summary of the plan itself, so. I don't know if you guys had specific questions, you know, then, or conversations around, if Mike or Kurt had other thoughts. These are just potential input questions or spots where conversation could happen if it made sense, but.
Hi, go ahead. I was just going to ask, Mike, you had sent us a email letter, you'd emailed us a letter in regards to, you requested to be included on the referral lists for future land use applications. I was just wondering if that was happening, if you're receiving that and if you're on that list.
Yeah, we are, we are absolutely receiving those and, and staff have been great and requesting our input and feedback and sharing stuff, even sometimes stuff that's outside of our purview. And, and, you know, we just let them know that when that occurs, but yeah, it, it has happened.
So when you see it, you're looking for connectivity, you're looking for, okay, where's that missing link?
Right.
Is this the application that's going to get us the missing link?
Right.
Stuff like that.
Exactly, yeah, possessing opportunities, yeah, for sure.
Okay, good, appreciate it.
Well, and as we look at the, the applications that come through, where, how can they help solve the needs that have been brought out in the master plan? Is it more play field, is it more athletic field? I think, my opinion, that I think the subdivision regs are lacking in further definition and requirements for parks and recreation within these large developments. I think that those that can be better quantified. A quarter acre pocket park within two-hundred-and-sixty homes doesn't really address the recreation of a larger community. So that's another option I'd like to see come out of this besides the, the talk to the road and bridge about incorporation of trails on these major corridors. But how can we expand the subdivision and zoning reg to better define park recreation?
Along the lines of what Mike said, there's, there's other developments that are somewhere along the line from a dream to a form application. Are, are you aware of all those different ones that are kind of floating out there?
The one we've officially seen is Miller Ranch.
Miller Ranch, okay.
And we've been incorporating the Two Simron, actually, the Two Simron. I, I think that, I can't recall all the comments, but we've been going everywhere, putting in wider improved trails. For six-foot dirt instead of a ten-foot paved trail to larger, more difficult. dirt instead of a ten-foot paved trail, to larger, more defined athletic fields, destination playgrounds, things like that. That's the biggest one I know of, but there's another one out on eighty-six, near County Road Three, that, I don't know where that lies, I tried community meetings, I would... They had a community meeting, but I don't think they've made a formal application. Those are the only two I'm aware of. Are there others that we should be on the horizon?
I'm not sure if it would be on, in the Park and Park District or not, but it's been floating around for a long time, different issues along the way, but it's something called Moorestead, it's north of Spring Valley.
Right.
And that's another, so there's going to be, in a row there, there's several of them, different ones there, but that, that one has not come to us yet, but I think they're getting everything lined up, but that would, might be one to stop by and talk to, downstairs and see.
I thought that Moorestead had a approved PUD.
Perhaps they have.
You know, I don't think they've taken it the next step into the plating process, but, but you would like to be involved in the PUD review?
Understood.
Because that starts to set the table for the plat.
Understood. So, that, but that means there's still final plats left there, so, that, just see where that might connect, I don't know where we're at on that.
That one's right catty corner from EC West.
Right.
It's right in the area that you're talking about, so definitely worth looking into that one, for sure.
Yeah, and that's, we're like, thinking about the trails, that Phase One of the trail, you know, if that made sense, that speak, you know, connecting with, sorry, with EC West and Crescent, and thinking about how those trails might connect, and thinks it would be a real benefit too, yeah.
Well, and along the line of trails and plats coming forward and more detailed engineering, it would be, it would be helpful to have discussions with Road and Bridge to incorporate some of the ideas for the trail running parallel to county roads, and how that can be incorporated, especially on the new sections, or let's call it the improved sections of county roads that are being impacted by EC West, Moorestead, Spring Valley, et cetera, et cetera. Because I realize there physically are challenges to incorporate a paved trail down a portion of County Road thirteen, because it's already been, been set.
Yeah, I've been trying to imagine that in my mind.
To try to put in, you know, however, you know, wider shoulders would, would be an improvement, and it's not a ten-foot trail, but...
On a safety, it becomes a safety issue through that too, how far off do we need kids on a trail from a heavily traveling road, so...
Right. So, we, the trail sections that Critter has proposed, look at it as it's a new section of road, okay? It, I don't think he really addressed, how do we retrofit sections of county roads, especially the ones that have been identified as major collectors? How do we get those brought up to speed? That, that could be a bit of a challenge. When it's a new development and they're tearing up Road twenty-nine to build their entrance, it ought to include the trails as detached trail from the county road.
So, yeah, so I mean, that's certainly one of the requests that we wanted to kind of formally make, is to continue to engage with you on the opportunities for trail development and the trail network, and, and again, I think, in our meeting with Road and Bridge, they, they were great, and they, they're very supportive, but also very pragmatic about some of the challenges that exist on some of these county roads with no shoulders and varying easement widths, you know, they change, you know, on one property it may be A, and the next property it drops down to B, right? And so, all of a sudden, you're on private property, so, certainly recognizing all those challenges and appreciate the input and knowledge sharing from Road and Bridge, but I think, as Kurt said, in some of the new, when, when a road is being built or improved, and we have an opportunity to kind of get some trail corridors put in there where the actual trail laid down itself, I think that's one thing we would ask, to continue to try to work with you and collaborate with you on. And then, the second thing, obviously, is the, you know, the property south of Spring Valley, the hundred-and-fifty-one acre property, and we do have, you know, an opportunity, if, if the commissioners are on board and supportive of a planned park site there, we would like to submit a, you know, a grant to GOCO to start requesting some funding to start building aspects of that park. And GOCO now funds projects up to $2 million for community impact-type projects, and I think we just have a real golden opportunity here, I think, if the county's willing to provide the land, you know, that certainly serves as a great match for a park project, and for us to show the partnerships that we've established here and the need for a regional site up in that area of our, of our district, I think it could, could be a strong project for GOCO to consider, but, you know, there is, and what I mentioned earlier in the meeting, some time sensitivity, that, you know, that would be the one thing where there is some time sensitivity, and I'm not trying to push you guys, if you guys need a process to go through this further and, and make decisions about that, that parcel, you know, do your process, but if it's possible for you guys to give us a commitment, you know, before August, that would certainly then allow me to submit a grant application for this cycle. If you're not able to do that by that timeline, we will look at the next cycle, so...
I think we can probably work with that timeline. We would need to talk with our attorney and find out exactly what that looks like as far as, you know, is it a lease, is it a deeded property, exactly how that works is best for the county, but, yeah, I think it's something that's worthy of pursuit.
And the funds that Mike is talking about would support physical improvements, but also the engineering and design of the property, correct?
Sure, yeah.
So, it's a pretty, pretty encompassing grant if we can get it with your support.
And those grants require matching funds, do you guys have...
They don't actually require matching funds, Dallas, I mean, GOCO has removed its matching requirements for almost all of its funding programs now, which is great, but the, when partners are able to show that they are bringing a match to the table, that certainly helps us gain more points and greater consideration, just shows the, kind of the buy-in and the investment of the community when we're able to show that we're bringing resources to the table. And when you talk about a hundred-and-fifty acre property, I mean, that's, that's a lot of resources being brought to the table.
So, really, we're talking about two different things here, the one-fifty project, a hundred-and-fifty acre project, but then also a separate project that would encompass the rec center and that...
Well, I think, yeah, good point, at this point, we haven't, we haven't identified funding for the rec center, and I think, again, the board is talking about, you know, for us, it would be going back to residents and asking them to pass a ballot initiative to fund the recreation center. They haven't set a timeline for doing that right now, I think they've kind of decided that if we're able to proceed with this project on the hundred-and-fifty-one acre, that that might be the priority for them for the next year or two, and the rec center may take a back step, at least that's, you know, I mean, again, I don't want to speak for them, they're still having discussions about that, but it seems right now that the focus has kind of shifted to this hundred-and-fifty-one acre, knowing that we could have the resource potentially do that, it's not dependent on us passing something by the rec.
Do so many things at once.
I have one additional question. When we're looking at the plan, you guys are going to send that to us, and when we're looking at it and we see some of these trail, projected trails, let's say, or a wish list of trails, do you have anything for us to look, look at that we can focus on? This one's realistic. Some of these don't sound like they're realistic based on the easement, based on the type of road, yeah, it would be great to have connecting trails between here and this development and that development, but it's not very realistic to think that we're going to be able to implement that trail. Now, some of them might be close, and we can focus on, maybe they're a certain color, hey, this one's blue or green, because we're close to being able to implement this, let's look at these, you know, and focus on them and try to make something happen. Because if I'm looking at a master plan with all these trails, we're going, yeah, I don't know how realistic that is to make that happen. So, it would be nice to have some detail to say, if we could just get this done with your guys' help, it might work. Something like, something like that, so we can, we can have something to really attack.
And we don't have a lot of property to play with.
No.
The district, that is. But, if you look at the ones that are part of this plan, part of this master plan, and what's the, what's the, I'm going to call it the low hanging fruit, what's the easy ones that we can do? That, that would be...
Talking about.
Okay, then it's Simron. Okay, Simron, we've, we've improved the Ball Diamond, we own a portion of it, I don't know if you can bring that up, but, but we own a portion where the Ball Diamond is, if you go out there, and we've worked with the Wranglers Athletic Group, they've poured money into improving the Ball Diamond, and then, but it's flanked by two pieces that belong to the county, and, and they're natural locations for just a casual soft surface loop trail to the west going towards Stageron, but not trying to connect to Stageron, and the second would, is a, to the east is a, is a potential connection to another loop trail, but it could connect to the town of Elizabeth Trail System. Those are real easy, to transfer a property, it's a work with Critter and his group on developing a trail alignment, and then it's constructing a soft surface trail, and maybe any other improvements such as an off-leash dog park or...
Yeah, it'd be nice to start checking some boxes, okay, we got this one connected, we got this one done, and we start seeing some progress, instead of just an overwhelming big picture, big plan about connectivity, it'd be nice, this one's, it's only a half a mile, but hey, we checked it off the box, this one's a mile, let's get the next one, you know, and that sort of thing, and just start expanding it piece by piece, by what's feasible, what was realistic, and, and kind of focus on those.
And the Elizabeth and the Pines, we've all lived that a number of times, that's another easy, easy one to do, it, you know, the hurdle is the buy-in of the neighborhood, but, but with this master plan in hand, we can show them, we have no intention, the district has no intention of whatever far-fetched dreams they imagine, condos, townhomes, shopping centers, we've heard it all. We want to have a parking space, a soft surf, a trail, done, and, and manage it, I mean, right now, it's not being taken care of, because they have no HOA, they have interested homeowners that might show up on a weekend, but...
Yeah, so it's actually the county now that goes over there and does fire mitigation and mows once in a while, I imagine, that type of stuff.
And I think too, for the larger trail connectivity, that larger network stuff, it's focusing on that Phase One pieces of it, which would be around EC West, and maybe this, that other new development, and just, that would be the first checkbox, is really thinking about and working with EC West and that, that location there, and often, when you're doing those larger network things, it is that overwhelming kind of, you can't, it's not realistic to think of doing it all, right? And master plan is a long-term thing, but you start with those, for a whole network, you start with those key starting points, and then stuff can, you know, connect and follow after that, once, once you start having networks that people start to use, then they want more, so, in that case, it would be really starting with that Phase One piece, for the larger network piece, which is, which is a little different from, you know, apart, you know, looking at the Simron Park and Elizabeth and the Pines.
So, the Elizabeth and the Pines and Simron, you're just strictly would be looking at a walking trail, bike trail type situation?
Yeah, I think the idea, I think the idea is we want to try to build miles of trail and give people options, right? I mean, people want to go and ride, they leave this area now because they can't go for a five-mile ride, you know, and so, if we're able to connect five miles worth of trails, I think we're going to see a lot more people using them and staying here to, to do some of that recreating, rather than putting their bikes on their, on their car and driving to Castle Rock or Parker.
Byron, do you have any questions? I'm sure you've been listening, but we haven't heard from you, if you have any questions, go ahead, speak up.
No, I don't have any questions, I'm just making notes here as you guys are talking.
Perfect.
Well, we don't have anything else formally at this time, again, want to thank you for this opportunity to share what we're doing, look forward to working with you guys on, continuing to make improvements for our residents, and please reach out at any time if you have any questions, we will get you the presentation, and we'll get you a copy of the master, the master plan report as well, as soon as it is published.
When do you anticipate it being published?
Hopefully in the next couple of weeks, is fingers crossed, but, yeah.
You're getting the board trustees from the town, Elizabeth and the Pines?
Yes.
They have a...
Yep.
Okay. Well, thanks for joining us today then. Good job.
Thanks for having us, yeah.